It's a little bit after seven o'clock and we have a public hearing that will be followed by the regular meeting of the Urbana City Council. The public hearing is on a proposed annexation agreement between the Urbana-Champaign Sanitary District and the City of Urbana for tracts of land totaling approximately .335 acres. Is there anyone who wants to testify at this public hearing? Well, since no one wants to testify, I'm going to close the hearing. Thank you. Now, I'd like to call the meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Jacobson.
Here.
Mr. Madigan.
Here.
Ms. Marlin.
Here.
Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Smythe.
Here.
Interpressing.
Here. First item is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, February 6, 2017.
Second.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Marlin. Any additions or corrections? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda? Okay. Our, under petitions and communications, we have a presentation of Justice and Mental Health Collaboration. There's a program presentation.
Hi. I'm Bruce Barnard. I am a consultant working with Rosecrance. Most of you probably know it as the Mental Health Center on criminal justice issues and the Mental Health Collaboration Program. Claudia Lindhoff is with me today, the Director of Champaign County Healthcare Consumers. But she's also working as a consultant on this program and is our collaboration consultant. She chairs the meetings. So what I'm going to do is very quickly just go through the Justice and Mental Health Collaboration Program, where we're at. It'll just take me a few minutes and then we'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. Essentially, where we're at is that persons with mental illness are incarcerated at higher rates, their incarceration is longer, and they have higher rates of recidivism than the general population. This is nothing new to you. You passed a resolution as to be part of the stepping up, National Stepping Up Initiative, recognizing the importance of providing some services for people who have mental illness and are engaged in the criminal justice system. We prepared and received a grant from the U.S. Department of Justice. The grant came to Champaign County and it funded a partnership between the Sheriff's Office and Rosecrance. It is essentially in the planning stages now. The amount awarded was just shy of $150,000. The project period was 24 months. It included technical assistance from the Council of State Government's Justice Center to help us in going through the comprehensive planning process. Essentially, I'm serving as the project director. We do have a project coordinator who's actually doing most of the work, even though she's not here tonight. The collaborative consultant to work with the committee. And we have a comprehensive planning committee, which I will show you who all is represented on that at the end of the presentation. We also have a data consultant because a large part of trying to understand what's happening in our criminal justice system with people with mental illness is the multiple data systems. The county has a data system. The police departments have a data system. The mental health providers have a data system. And trying to make sense of all that to actually get an accurate snapshot of what's happening is one of the significant challenges. We call the planning committee the Crisis Response Planning Committee. The project called for us to convene that committee to assess our current system, identify gaps in services, establish common definitions required for system-wide outcomes, monitoring and measurement of prevalence rates, and conduct a data-driven analysis of the need for improved screening and engagement of persons with mental illness in the criminal justice system, the possibility of a diversion center, which has received a lot of discussion in this community, enhanced law enforcement crisis response, targeted information sharing systems, and to identify a number of additional evidence-based strategies that have been employed across the country. Our goals and objectives were to determine and recruit representatives that rep, from various constituencies. We have representatives from law enforcement, crisis intervention team, the state's attorney, the sheriff's office, the jail administration, social service planning, citizen representation. We tried to get a broad representation of everyone who was involved in either providing services to people with mental illness or involved in the criminal justice system and through the incarceration process, sentencing, probation, all the way through. Reached consensus about a statement of program goals and objectives, draft a detailed work plan. We are, I would say, about 60 to 70 percent through this process right now. Identify services and resources necessary to complete the project, define our target population, and define system-wide outcome measures. The core of what we're trying to do is this, the sequential intercept model, which has been used across the country as a planning model for these types of interventions. The idea is that we can intervene at any one of these intercepts in order to provide services to someone with a mental illness, provide better care for them within the criminal justice system. So, for example, intercept one, now obviously there is a whole plethora of things that can be done before someone has any contact with the criminal justice system. This model assumes that we're going to start intervening when they have contact with the criminal justice system. So the crisis intervention team that you have here in Urbana, the specially trained officers who are able to respond in situations where there is mental illness or an emotional disturbance is an intervention at intercept one through law enforcement. We then look at initial detention and first court appearance. One of the things that we have done since we've started this project is a evidence-based screening for mental illness, for substance abuse, for every person who is booked at the Champaign County Jail. That allows us then to say, it's not a diagnosis, but it is a valid way of saying this person is potentially someone who has a mental illness and should be provided with additional screening, with opportunity to access services. It also allows us, from a data standpoint, to begin to track those measures. What I started off with was saying that people with mental illness stay longer and have higher recidivism rates. We know that nationally from research that's been done. Up until a few months ago, we didn't have the capacity to track that information in Champaign County because we had no way of separating who, in that population, from the regular jail population in terms of length of stay. Intercept three, specialty courts. We have an active drug court in this county. There may be a possibility for other courts. We have, prior to this, begun to provide services at the county jail, the mental health provider, the substance abuse provider, provide those services. We don't have, in this county, what a lot of counties would consider to be a diversion program. However, we do have people who are booked in the jail seeing a judge within that seven days a week. The results that we are getting, or at least the way it's explained to me, is very similar to what you would get in an evidence-based diversion program. But we have opportunities to look at the services that people can receive, to be released on their own recognizance, to be engaged with services, and to reduce that rate of recidivism. So there's opportunities for us there at intercept three. Intercept four is reentry. I've been before you before talking about the reentry program that's funded by Champaign County. There's also opportunities to look at services specifically for people with mental illness at intercept four reentry, and then parole and probation. So regardless of where someone is at the intercept, what we want to do is to track data across that entire system so that we can understand the role that mental illness and substance abuse are playing in our criminal justice system and respond appropriately at each intercept. As I said before, the Department of Justice, Justice and Mental Health Collaboration Program is multi-year funding. We are in the planning stage now. We are in the process of preparing a grant for implementation. The committee will be making decisions, hopefully next month, to prioritize what our high priority services are for Champaign County in that opportunity. And that would be an additional two-year grant that would allow us to begin to implement some of the programs that do not exist here now that we feel like would have an opportunity to accomplish our goals. Following that, there's an opportunity, assuming this program stays in place, there's an opportunity for program expansion funding. For right now, this was designated for us through the Department of Justice. So the people that we're looking at are people who have diagnosed mental illness or co-occurring mental health and substance use disorder and have faced or are facing criminal charges for a misdemeanor or felony that is nonviolent. That wasn't necessarily our choice. That was the Department of Justice's choice in terms of how they allocated the resources for this program. That's not to say that the planning and the services that we put into place are not going to be available to someone who is convicted of a violent offense or has been convicted of a violent offense, but the target population is nonviolent. These are our current priorities that we are thinking about. And just to give you an idea of where we're headed, one is to develop a Behavioral Health Justice Coordinating Council, so a group that would be representative of all the law enforcement agencies, the behavioral health providers, the judiciary, to oversee all of the aspects that are happening in terms of criminal justice and behavioral health. We're looking at something called a co-responder initiative, which has been very successful across the country, that actually pairs a crisis intervention team-trained officer with a mental health professional. We want to ensure that risk needs screening. In this case, we're just talking about an evidence-based tool that assesses the risk of recidivism and can be used to provide case management focused on that person's needs. We want to ensure, probation uses that now, but it is not done on everyone and is not available to judges who are making decisions about what types of services someone may need in order to be released on their own recognizance. Provide mental health expertise to the public defender. We have an adversarial system and it is extremely valuable for the public defender, whose only obligation is to act on the person's behalf, to have access to someone who has some expertise in mental health. Expand case management opportunities for the reentry population with a history of mental health or mental illness. We do have case management available for the reentry population, but we have a very high caseload and the more intensive services that someone with a mental health diagnosis may need would be better served, perhaps, by a dedicated case manager. And provide infrastructure and processes to ensure actionable data analysis and sharing at all levels of the intercept model. That's the key to the whole thing, to understand our outcomes and to know what's happening and where we can most effectively intervene for the benefit of the individuals in the system and the community at large. I'm not going to go through this, but you can see for yourself who the representatives on the Crisis Response Planning Committee are. And I'll end it there. If there's any questions, we'll be happy to, Claudia will be happy to answer them.
Okay. Charlie?
Yeah. I suspect that this might be a joint question with Eric here. Could you turn back to the intercept model for a second, please? I didn't, I was envisioning something a little different here. That initial detention, you know, has, off to a specialty court there or a first court appearance. I'm, I guess I envisioned a situation where somebody's contact, maybe not necessarily a chargeable offense, maybe it is, maybe it isn't, but it seems like there's a, there would be an option to, to put that individual in some kind of mental health treatment immediately. And that doesn't show up here in, in the way this is drawn.
Right. And you are correct. And these, these are basically pretty broad descriptions of what might happen at each one of those intercepts. But we do have, assuming the person is taken to jail and, but it is determined that, that it's not a chargeable offense and they are to be released the next day, or even if they're just going to be released on their own recognizance, there are currently mental health workers in the jail to link with that person and then try to keep them engaged in the community, if I understand your.
Yeah. Well, I was envisioning something where they didn't even go to jail. They'd go to.
Right. And, and so that would be more intercept one, where law enforcement may be involved, but the person is never taken into custody. And that's where the co-responder model would provide that linkage because there would be a mental health worker.
So, so, so as you, as you develop your goals and objectives and programs, this could expand, is what you're telling.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. These are just.
This is a starting point.
Right. There's probably.
This is sort of what we have today, right?
Yeah. There's probably a dozen or so options within each one of these boxes that's not presented there.
Eric?
So I'll ask you now in public to share what you shared with me prior to the meeting. The next stage, you're going to apply for an implementation grant. And you implement, you're going to try to submit that grant in April?
It's due in April.
Due in April. Which is a very short time away. I mean, I'm not telling you anything. It's not on your mind. And you said that you believed that it would be strengthened by some kind of commitment from the other entities in Champaign County.
Absolutely.
And so are you, are you reaching out to the City of Champaign as well as to us in that regard?
There is a match requirement in the grant and we are hopeful that the Champaign County Mental Health Board will assist with that. They provided the match for the initial funding grant. However, we very much would like to present a proposal that would show that the municipalities of Urbana and Champaign and Rantoul and the county itself are also supportive of what we're doing and see this as a worthwhile goal. Absolutely.
Yeah. I would think that would be essential because the, the mental health providers are in Champaign and Urbana. The, the officers who encounter the people, I mean, sometimes it's Champaign County, but more often it's City of Champaign or City of Urbana or City of Rantoul. So, so when, there's a saying that if you want us to be there at the landing, which I'll define as the time that the proposal's got to go in, maybe you ought to give us a seat at the takeoff or at least not too far after that. So that we could see how this is, see how this is, is developing.
Absolutely.
And not that, I'm sure that we don't want to dictate anything. You guys are experts. You've been going over the data and all that. But, but, but if we're going to make a commitment, that would have to be in a.
You want to talk about the time, timelines?
Yeah. In a year that we're starting to prepare a budget for.
Right. Right.
So the Crisis Response Planning Committee, which is the, the body responsible for implementing this current grant, is actually in the process of finalizing the recommendations and the goals that we want to include in our program implementation grant. Our next meeting will be, I believe it's Wednesday, March 1st.
First, yeah.
And at that meeting, we'll sort of be finalizing, you know, those priorities and those goals. And then we can communicate back out to you to say, this is, this is what we're looking at doing. This is what we're applying for. You know, we have, Bruce presented you with our current priorities that we're moving forward with. And then the next meeting will be a more refined discussion of those priorities. And so at that point, you'll know a little bit more what it's looking like.
But even if you were to say, and you know, I'm not trying to, by any, by any means prescribe what you may do, but if, even if you were to say, we intended to continue to invest in crisis intervention team training for our officers in the City of Urbana, that would be helpful.
Yep.
You know, obviously, anything more is, is going to be welcome and, and we would receive it, but that would definitely be helpful.
Yep.
How does Champaign do? We, we always are looking over at Champaign because we, not that we're so competitive, but we are competitive. And, and so we, we always want, you know, if we do our share, we want them to do their share. How, how do we compare with them as far as crisis intervention team officers?
You know, that's a, it's a very good question and I, and I do not have the answer. I don't know.
Diane?
Just to provide some context, and I'm not sure if I'm asking the right question, but can, do you have an idea of the estimate of the number of people or percentage of contacts that involve mental illness that get to, to stage two of that interceptor model or?
You mean in terms of people who are contacted by law enforcement that end up in that initial detention phase?
Yeah.
That information is, and kind of while we're here talking about this, the crisis intervention team is also working on their data system to give us better information about that. I have some of their reports, but I don't have it at my fingertips and I would hate to, to guess and give you the wrong information.
So at this point, we just don't have a full extent of the problem?
Well, I mean, if you think about it, law enforcement really just has a few options. They can take someone to the hospital and petition to have them committed against their will. They can take someone to the hospital who agrees to go, where they would then be assessed. They can essentially leave them in the situation, somehow resolve it in situation, or they can take them to jail. And one of the things that, that a co-responder model may do is to give them another option, which would be to, and the same kind of thing with a, an assessment center, would provide another option where they would have a place to take someone. That is an expensive way to do it, to be quite frank, and some communities have found value in a co-responder model because that, that mental health worker can take more time and assist that person in accessing available resources in the community short of incarceration or hospitalization.
But I, I think when we do start getting the data from the crisis response team, when, when they are able to put it together and present it, I think a lot of people may be surprised by what a large percentage of the calls law enforcement gets are dealing with mental health situations.
What was truly alarming to me was the number of suicide-related calls that law enforcement are called upon to respond to.
I just wanted to ask you, Seattle is dealing with children in the schools, trying to identify children that are running into problems. So is there any effort to do that in this community with, is Rosecrance, or are you just focused right now strictly on the judicial system?
Well, this grant is, is focused on adults. But the kinds of, of programs that you're talking about, Seattle has done a lot of really creative things. And there are, I know that Rosecrance is working with some schools to try and identify people and provide those services, but.
Okay. Thank you. I think we'll have Aaron be next, and then.
And then Dennis.
Dennis, and then you. Okay.
So you, I heard you mention reentry also, but it seems like the conversation is now focused solely on mental health. Or is reentry, are you connecting people, the reentry with mental health? How does this connect?
Okay. Yeah. It's a really good question. So the, the funding that the county is providing for reentry is not specific to mental health. We can serve anyone coming out of Department of Corrections or coming out of the county jail who's completed a sentence. One of the things we do in the reentry program is connect people with behavioral health services if they need it. And one of the recommendations that the reentry council has given to the Justice and Mental Health Collaboration Council is to consider having more intensive, more specialized case management for the reentry population that does have a mental health diagnosis, which, as I think about it from our, our other reentry program, would free up some case management resources for the other folks who need help with housing or employment or, does that answer your question?
Yeah. That gets me, I have a couple more things I wanted to ask. So I don't know a whole lot about the reentry program that you have. Could you just give me a little bit of understanding of how it works currently?
Sure. Sure. So the reentry program that's funded by the county board is, has established a reentry council, and that has representatives from first followers, from other entities in the, in the county that are providing reentry services. It, law enforcement, jail, and what I consider to be a major step in the right direction, parole. We receive information from parole of everyone who is being released to Champaign County so that we can make a contact, provide them with a flyer that has community resources on it, and offer to have that person come for a screening, which would then link them with case management specific to whatever their needs are, housing, health, vocational insurance. Yeah. We do linkage through healthcare consumers for health insurance enrollment. And so there's a, a case manager that's funded through that program, and then the folks who do the, the contacts. So that's basically how reentry is working right now.
So the, the other thing you had, when you, if you go back to the target populations.
Sure.
So if you have a misdemeanor or a felony that's violent, basically you cannot work with them. So the CU Fresh Start program, for instance, you would not be able to offer services to those individuals who were targeted by that program?
So the way I'm interpreting this, until Department of Justice tells me otherwise, is this is our target population for planning purposes. So we're going to develop a service system that meets the needs of this population. But if that service system can provide services safely and effectively to someone who does not necessarily meet this definition, I'm fine with that.
I guess concerned with the people who have mental illness, and we're going to say, well, if you have a felony conviction, we can't give you the service that you need, sounds a little, like it needs some sort of tweaking. And then my last question for you is how, when, or where does Rosecrance partner with employees to help people with mental illness or people with felonies get jobs?
So that would be through the case management. So people who have a mental illness and they may be seeing a psychiatrist, they they may be on medication, they may be getting other services from Rosecrance. They would also have a case manager that would be assigned to them. And part of what that case manager would do is provide them with assistance for access to housing, employment opportunities, vocational rehabilitation, access to other resources in the community.
So, do you guys have like a list of employers who will hire people who have felony convictions and all that kind of stuff?
Yeah.
Or mentally ill people?
We, we do have that. We don't pretend that it's enough to meet the need. So, there's sort of an organizing and advocacy component to all of this. We know that, um, that there's tremendous barriers to housing for people who have convictions. It is sometimes difficult to find employment, even though we do have a list of employers. And so, besides the case management work and the linkage work that we do, part of what the, the staff members and also the body, the governing body is trying to do is, is work on reducing some of those barriers, like with the Housing Authority, with the City of Champaign's Housing Nondiscrimination Ordinance, which has an exception in it where discrimination is allowed based on conviction. So, we're trying to also address the more systemic issues as well.
Okay, all right, thank you. But this target population definition is not ours. That came from the Department of Justice, yeah.
Okay, Dennis, and then Eric, and then Bill?
Yeah, I was wondering if your vision was to provide some kind of a short-stay clinic environment for these people who are being brought in, who may have the mental illness until they're stabilized? Is this something that you imagine being a, a facility that might appear? Or maybe farmed out of some other, like clinic or hospital that exists already?
So, that's been a big part of the discussion is, you know, call it an assessment center, call it a diversion center, whatever you want to call it, a residential center where people would have the opportunity to go, be assessed, and be linked with resources. As I sit here today, I don't have data to support the need for that. It, it may be there, but we have not gone far enough through our data process to determine that there are enough people who would benefit from that type of a center in order to justify the cost, because operating any kind of a 24-hour program is, is very expensive. We do have, Rosecrance has a respite center, psychiatric respite center. So, anyone who does not need to be hospitalized but cannot go to their home environment can go to the psychiatric respite center. And that would continue to be an opportunity, a residential opportunity. But it, it may be that we need, you know, similar to what they have in Bear County, Texas, a center, a comprehensive center, but we just don't have the data really to justify that at this point.
And, and it might be a stepwise process that maybe we start with building out a robust co-responder model that can create better community-based supports and linkages to services. And we may find that if we're able to do that, maybe the need for a center really isn't there or isn't nearly as great, but we just, you know, we don't know yet. But we do definitely believe that we need a more robust, community-based response mechanism and strengthening people's linkage to behavioral health and other kinds of services that may be able to help them stay safely, you know, in their homes, in the community, and, and develop a relationship with behavioral health providers and healthcare providers to help keep people more stable.
Well, I, and I kind of asked that because I understand that usually the call for need is higher than available service, and there can be a, a waiting period before a person gets a chance to be, be assessed. You know, I mean, I've seen that happen in the population here in the past, and that's like one of the, the waiting period to, to receive the service, you know, can, even if it's like, you know, seven hours can be a really hard time for a person who may now suddenly be homeless because of their activity or something.
And, and one of the things I'm, I'm really, and I appreciate the question, because one of the things I'm really concerned about is that we not set up a system where the only way to access mental health services is to go to jail.
Right.
So, you know, that there needs to be opportunities to intervene at, at some other point.
Okay, Eric?
So, I, I actually pulled out some numbers in response to an earlier concern, and that was numbers at least in Urbana. So, last year in 2016, health, mental health and wellness category for Urbana Police Department calls, assists sick, injured, excited, delirium, 195. Suicide, suicide attempts, suicide threats, 151. Crisis intervention, 379, for a total of 725. Five years earlier, it was less than half that. So, and, and in each of the intervening years, it's been going steadily up. And I guess that every single one of those people, and of course, we are approximately 20%, I guess, of the county population, so it's five times that for the entire county. And I guess that every single one of the people who would fall in that category ought to get an assessment.
Well, potentially, or, or at least a screening, if not a complete assessment.
Yeah, a screening, yeah, an initial, yeah, the expedited screening that you've talked to. Now, and I did want to ask a question. Local hospitals and clinics, are you hoping, or have they already indicated that they will be supportive of the implementation grant?
They are very supportive. They are very interested in hearing the specifics, of course. What they are primarily interested in is the effect on their emergency department, that if we can provide a more meaningful process and take some of the load off the emergency department, that, uh, that would be a benefit to them.
Right. And, and will they step up and help provide the ability to do that?
We're having a conversation.
We're, we're hopeful.
You're hopeful, okay, good. I'm glad you have reason to hope, good.
Okay, Bill?
Yeah, looking at the target population again, I don't see it saying that someone with a previous conviction for a violent felony, it does not qualify. So, someone that had a previous conviction could still qualify. It's just whatever's pending currently wouldn't, couldn't be a violent.
Yeah, and I, and again, I think that was the target population to use for planning purposes and identifying need. But if we have a co-responder model and a crisis intervention team officer is responding, and our mental health worker that's funded by this grant is in the car, they're going to respond.
Yep.
Okay. And then, as far as the screening tools you use, is that something that only the co-responder can do? Or is that something our crisis intervention officers are already doing? Is it a simple screening, the kind of the first step?
So, there's, there's, like, there's a brief jail mental health screen that actually can be administered by a corrections officer, and we're using that in the jail. It's just a very quick 12-question survey. And there's something called the Texas Christian T-CUDs, universal, some, it's a substance abuse screen, and it, it's something similar, and those can be done by corrections officers. We're looking at a system that would have essentially three levels. That initial screen, which would flag a concern, and then a more comprehensive screen that would be done by a, someone with some clinical training and may take a half an hour or so. And then, if that indicates yes, then going on to a full assessment, which can take a couple of hours to actually complete a comprehensive assessment for treatment planning purposes. So, we're kind of looking at three different levels of screening.
Okay, and then just one more. I can't let you get away without putting in, a concern of mine is that there hasn't been any screening for gambling addiction that I know of. And I don't know if this would fit into your mental health model, but if there's any way to squeeze that in. And I know there are some short screening tools of five or six questions that you might be able to get.
Yeah, I appreciate, I appreciate that, because there's so much parallel between gambling addiction and substance abuse that, um, I'll look into that.
What about sugar addictions?
Eric?
No, I'll, I'll, I'll second that. I've had such a crisis of conscience about permitting the, the slot machines in Urbana. And if I, if we can in any way support, you know, treating that addiction, it will at least use my conscience a little bit.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We very much appreciate your time.
We appreciate it. May I take a moment and make a quick announcement?
Sure.
I'm sorry. I was really just sort of an extraneous adornment during Bruce's presentation, but I do appreciate your time. I just wanted to let people know that tomorrow evening, there's a forum at Prentice Covenant Medical Center about the Affordable Care Act and possible repeal of the Affordable Care Act, and it will be at 6:30 PM at Prentice Covenant Medical Center. Somebody from the Prentice Health System will be speaking. Prentice is the largest Catholic health system in the state of Illinois. So, it's very significant that we have somebody of that stature speaking about the Affordable Care Act. Nancy Greenwald from Promise Healthcare, which operates the Francis Nelson Health Center, will be speaking. I'll be speaking, and Lucia Maldonado will be speaking. And one of the things that I wanted to mention is that all the work that we're doing around mental health and justice and substance abuse treatment and so on is really made possible through the Affordable Care Act and through the Medicaid expansion in the state of Illinois. So, the stakes are very, very high on this, but anybody would be welcome to attend. And thank you for letting me do this.
So, where, at Prentice, is this going to help?
So, it'll be in their auditorium. So, when you come into the hospital, you just go past the information desk, and then it'll be in the rooms to the left, right in that hallway across from the bathrooms and registration.
Okay, thank you very much. I have two public input cards here. One of them is Scott Green, who wants to talk about electric vehicle charging. I don't even know if that's on our agenda. You checked that you wanted to talk about it at the time of the agenda, but would you like to talk about it now?
Oh, no, but later it's fine. Or, you have another meeting.
Well, I mean, if you're here tonight, you can tell us what you want to say.
Okay, should I go over to the?
Sure.
Okay. Yeah, so, basically, I'm sort of an electric vehicle enthusiast. I don't actually own one yet myself, but one of the limitations is lack of sort of sufficient charging infrastructure, especially public charging stations. It's a really big industry as far as reducing carbon emissions, but also our reliance on oil, especially from other countries. And so, it's, sustainable transport is really big, and it's on the rise. So, I was just wanted to sort of present this notion of possibly investing in expanding electric vehicle charging infrastructure, like public charging stations in the city to sort of foster electric car adoption in Urbana.
Do you, do you know how other cities finance those stations?
Um, I have not looked into that before tonight, but I can do more research on that.
Okay.
I, sorry, this is my first time giving public input, so I don't really know how it works, but...
Okay, we'll be happy to hear from you when you
All right.
get some of that information, because we always have to wonder, worry about where are we going to get the money to pay for things.
Of course, yeah. All right, thank you.
Okay.
But you did it right. Good start.
And we have Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood and Bishop King James Underwood, who want to register their continued interest in the, and concern about the Dr. Ellis sewer problem, but do not wish to testify. Is there anyone else who would like to address the Urbana City Council? Okay, we'll move on.
Unfinished business?
I don't think we have any unfinished business that we're going to deal with. So, reports from standing committees, Aaron Ammons, the committee of the whole.
Thank you. So, on half the committee of the whole, I move resolution number 2017-01-003R, a resolution regarding the interface between mental health, criminal justice, and public safety. Alderman, Jacobson.
Okay, yeah.
Oh, this is just discussion only?
Yeah, this will, this will just be a discussion item tonight because of my awkwardness in figuring out how to place it on the agenda. But I guess what I would like to ask the council, and I can, you know, tune this up for formal, uh, action at committee of the whole next week for expression of opinion, what I, what I really want to, what I really want to extract from, uh, from the council is a commitment to do our share to support the, uh, to support the, the effort that we've just seen described. Our share, you know, being at this point undefined, but we get more information about exactly what the implementation grant looks like.
Charlie?
Yeah, so, a couple of suggestions on, on the resolution that's, that you emailed around. The fourth whereas, since it's sort of duplicative of the first whereas, I would suggest, you know, you, you put in a comment, or you put in a whereas there that refers to the city's investment in crisis intervention training.
Yes, thank you.
That would be a good place for that. And then in the last whereas, before the therefore be it resolved, I would indicate that, I would add the, the grant support going forward, applications for grant support going forward in there. And then, you know, it's sort of, therefore be it resolved, and, and that, the last two paragraphs already sort of imply that we are going to entertain some kind of contribution, which would be, maybe you could add a reference to including it in our budget planning process for the year. And, and that would just cover us, and, and I think maybe that would even provide the resolution of support for upcoming grant applications. Maybe, maybe not. Thank you.
Okay. I, I think all of those, I'm taking all of those as friendly suggestions. They're all in the, in the, in the right spirit, moving in the right direction.
Were there any other comments, discussion? Mayor?
Uh, I think we should have something in the city goals that's also talking about dealing with these problems early on for children. I mean, I, this is specific to a grant, and we got to move at some point, but I think we should be looking at what other cities are doing. Because why wait till somebody's an adult and has to end up being, talking to the police?
Uh, I agree. I don't think that's part of exactly this resolution.
No, no, it isn't.
But I think that, yeah, uh, mental health services for, as part of our city goals is, is really a great idea.
Dennis?
And, uh, so I was wondering if also this might be something that the township could discuss. I mean, township disperses a lot of support for community services. I'm wondering if there's part of a budget discussion.
Yeah, let's do another, well, let's do this resolution.
Get two, yeah, get two organizations to support it, not just one.
Yeah, you could have two organizations. They're the same organization, but you'll get two.
Okay, so, oh, Diane?
Well, I don't want to let the state off the hook in this. So, is it possible to put some language in about continuing to advocate for adequate funding from the state for these sorts of services?
I think that's great.
Okay.
I wouldn't count on it. I think we're just going to have to come to grips with things, because the state is really in a big mess. But we should say that they, I mean, I, when you talked about the number of, the amount of time that the officers are spending, my question would be, is that on more people? Or is it on the same people? So, you know, because I think this is coming about because of the lack of state services.
Yeah, yeah. The, uh, these calls, we have more and more and more calls of this type, and each call of this type takes more and more, more of an officer's time than other kinds of calls.
But are they individuals, more different people? Or is it more the same people getting more problems?
That's a research question.
Mike?
Yeah, just real quickly, not really to the substance of the matter, but more to the process. Imagine how much simpler it would be if... to, uh, the process. Uh, imagine how much, uh, simpler it would be if we only had one body to bring this to. So why don't we dissolve the township, uh, and absorb it into the city, and we can all just.
Anybody else have any comments?
Same thing in one fell swoop, so.
Okay, Eric.
As, as soon as the township is finished with the Carl lawsuit, I think we're ready to move on that.
Just in a quick response, I would say, uh, that would be quite all right, and that'll be just about the same time Carl moves everything that they can out of this town, uh, and moves it into their new beautiful three hundred and, three hundred and some thousand square foot building with a huge future property tax assessment.
So they're gonna pay property taxes in that other place? Is that what you're saying?
Well, if we're, if we prevail, right?
Yeah, interesting, isn't it? All right, um, any other comments or discussion on that? All right. So this is gonna be take, we're gonna discuss it further in committee of the whole next week, right?
Right, you'll have the.
Improved version, yeah.
All right, all right, all right. All right, so ordinance number 2017-02-006, and ordinance amending Schedule J of Section 23, 183 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code prohibiting parking at all times on certain streets, Hill Street between Romine Street and Goodwin. No, I, I don't wanna say that, 'cause I, I have a concern about this, and some questions that have come up. All right, so on behalf of the committee, I, I.
Would you rather?
Move approval, or so move, or whatever, I don't, yeah, go for it.
Well, I'll second. I was gonna say I'd make the motion if you didn't want to.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Ammons, seconded by Mr. Madigan, another historic first.
Just in time, I'm about done.
Is there any, is there any discussion?
Charlie?
What I was gonna say is that we have a revised version on our desk here, so I assume the motion was to that effect. Uh, there's, uh, my, some minor corrections, I believe, that, uh, Kurt Borman, uh, asked for.
Well, if someone would, if I could relinquish the chair for a moment, I do have comments and questions. It's not necessary.
Hey, you're not the chair.
I, I would, oh.
Committee of the whole, I thought I was just, oh. Go for it, man. I was in charge of, since I was doing the committee of the whole.
Okay, so we have a motion, uh, and a second. Is there any discussion? Do you wanna say something?
Yes. All right, so, uh, in speaking with, uh, a couple of very outspoken constituents the other night after we met, um, there were some questions that I don't think I had a chance to raise to anyone in public works, or, uh, they may have been answered, but, uh, one question is, why can't we, why can't we have parking on both sides of the street? Bill, you wanna? And if you're not prepared to do this, I would, I would move that we take it back to committee of the whole for further discussion if Bill is not prepared, 'cause there's at least three questions, or two questions and a, a concern that, uh, could be addressed further in, in, uh, committee of the whole.
How about if I take all your questions, and I'll get you an answer?
No problem. So, uh, the first question was, why can't we have parking on both sides? Uh, why can't we prohibit parking during certain times as to not permanently inconvenience the residents?
Which would allow parking on both sides?
Yes. Wouldn't, well, it, it wouldn't have to, from, uh, from what I garnered from, in speaking with the constituents about this, uh, if you just said, you can't park on the north side of the street during the pickup and drop-off times, and then you can just simply leave the parking on the north side of the street and not have parking on the south side of the street.
So you would have a pickup zone?
Basically, a pickup zone. Uh, and what we discussed, it was actually, I was speaking to, to Bishop and Dr. Underwood about it, and, for instance, on, in front of Booker T. Washington, there are sort of barriers that they put out during certain times. It doesn't interrupt, they didn't change the parking on the south side of the street on, uh, is that Grove Street, right? Yeah, and, um, so during the times of pickup and drop-off, there's basically barriers or something that are put out for Booker T. Washington, and for the parents to pick up. So there was an understanding that was reached there, so that we didn't have to really change, uh, inconvenience the residents. And that was sort of the third question, sort of connected to.
Okay.
Okay, Dennis?
Okay, so in honor of, uh, your request, I'd make a motion that we send this back to committee for further study until we receive those answers.
Second.
Okay, motion by Roberts, seconded by Smythe. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Mr. Ammons?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I just would like to make a comment on this.
Okay.
And I have no problem with that. I mean, it's your ward. I, I absolutely respect that, and would, would certainly assume that you would do the same if I had concerns in my ward. I, it, it is interesting, though, I mean, have you talked to former Alderman Lewis about this? He attended the traffic commission meeting and had no concerns as a property owner on that block. Um, so that gave great weight to me in, in moving this forward to council for approval on behalf of the Crisis Nursery. So I would just suggest that if you haven't spoken to him, he did attend the traffic commission meeting and, and had no concerns as a property owner on that block.
I certainly will. And I thank you. I appreciate that. I appreciate the, um.
But hey, if people on that block have issues, and it's your ward, I'm all for, uh, delaying this. There's no urgency to it. We need to get it right. Uh, but I, I would just urge you to reach out to him.
No, I will.
And get his perspective.
I definitely will. I appreciate that.
Sure.
All right, so. Ordinance number 2017-02-008, and ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 20, Articles Two and Five, on behalf of committee, I so moved.
Second.
Motion by Ammons, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Ordinance number 2017-02-007, colon, sorry, I just had to do that, and ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for FY 2016-17, Cohen Building Development EAB Treatment Program and Other Items. On behalf of the committee, I so moved.
I'll second.
Dennis? Okay. Uh, motion by Ammons, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Ammons?
So, um, we are moving $500,000 from TIF 1 into TIF 3, correct? From, the new TIF, to Central TIF, from TIF 1 to the Central TIF, TIF 2 into the Central TIF. I'm trying to get these TIFs together.
From TIF 2 to the Central TIF. TIF 1 is closed.
Okay. TIF 2 to the Central TIF. I'm getting it, y'all. I'm getting it. All right, so the $500,000, um, that is being moved, will it be moved back to the TIF in which it is being taken from at some point?
I, I think that remains to be seen.
So that remains to be my problem with TIF. It seems to be, a lot of remains to be seen without a lot of definite answers, so I'm a little concerned about that, because whatever the understanding is in TIF 2, and we have a lifespan of a particular TIF, and if that lifespan of a TIF expires, any money that is left in that TIF is supposed to be given to all of the taxing bodies. And so if we have $500,000 that we're moving from TIF 2, if it were to expire, um, and we've moved that money out of it, then the taxing bodies would be deprived of that money? Am I misunderstanding something here?
Um, I guess I would say that a little differently. I think ultimately they would benefit from that investment in the Central TIF at the end of the life of the Central TIF.
So my concern is that, though, we, these agreements are, if it's 23 years, and then we have the right to expand it a little bit further if we so choose, but then another way around that is, we could take the $500,000 that you were going to get at, after 30 years, and we can move it to another TIF, and then you have to wait another 23 years until that one's done before you get that increment that was supposed to come out of the other 23 or 30-year agreement. And I'm probably confusing people as much as I'm confused about all of this.
Okay, Libby Tyler?
So the term of the development agreement would be well within the term of the TIF. That's always a case with these development agreements. We wanna make sure that the benefits are paid out well within the term. A standard term for development agreements is no longer than 10 years.
Okay, I don't know if.
So it's not a case where the TIF is going to expire and we'll continue to roll these debts forward?
So, as community development per, would the $500,000 that's been taken out of TIF 2 and being put into Central TIF be returned to TIF 2?
Uh, TIF 2 will expire in 2022, so, um, I'd have to look at the term, but I would, I would hope so, but I'd have to look at the term of the agreement. Um, the thought here is, when TIFs are contiguous, you can port monies, which is what we're doing, and we've done that, um, over and over again when TIFs are contiguous. So, in this particular case, our new TIF has pretty zero balance, because we started again, and we, uh, awarded back to all the taxing districts, including the city, um, those funds by setting the new base.
So do we typically give large, transfer large sums of money like this from one TIF to another, or is it just for the downtown TIF?
We've done this quite often. Um, TIF 4's had a balance that we've used to support projects in TIF 2. Um, it is allowed, I think with our current Central TIF, there are a lot of worthy projects in the Central TIF. We adopted, city adopted the plan. However, until those projects get built and begin to generate their increment, there's no way to incentivize those projects without the assistance of TIF 2. We reduced TIF 2 when we adopted the new Central TIF, and, and pretty good detail in the plan, we talk about how TIF 2 will support the beginnings of the Central TIF. And then, like I said, in 2022, TIF 2 goes away, and then we just have the remaining years on the Central TIF.
Okay, so TIF 2 has been in effect for how long at this point?
Um, it was extended by the legislature, so it was extended in, gosh, 2008 or 9, I think?
But you're basically saying that 2022 is the end. There's no more extensions.
No more. Yep.
And do we think that the projects in TIF 2, do we anticipate more projects in TIF 2, or we, are we working on anything for TIF 2?
Um, well, I think there are some projects remaining in TIF 2.
In the fund balance?
There's some in TIF 2, and some in Central TIF.
So in the fund balance in TIF 2, after we move the $500,000, would be how much?
Do you have that, Elizabeth?
Eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand.
Okay, that's all I have now. Thank you.
Okay, so who seconded this one?
I did.
Okay, all right, Dennis?
I, and, um, Elizabeth, maybe, uh, see if I understand this in a maybe different way. Um, when an individual has $500,000 invested in a project, of course, they want their return back. But if a corporation or, or a government agency, school district, park district, um, Parkland College, Community College, makes an investment, and they've done it in an organization which they helped create because of their, um, agreement to, to support it by not receiving all their tax, uh, their property taxes. They have a longer range concept about investment than an individual does, and so we're, so the investment of a large amount of money, $500,000, is handled and thought about differently than a, so, a small investor would do it. And I think that a concern about whether you're gonna get your money back at a certain date is probably not how a business or, um, governmental structure or school district, um, can, that's not their concern so much as the improvement that these investments will bring the community in the long run. So they have a longer range understanding of the return for their investment than by a pert, a certain date, I get all my money back that I invested. I think that's how I look at these investments.
Right, yeah. I mean, in, in TIF, the goal ultimately is to, you forego some property tax revenue in the short term with the goal of increasing the property values for the long term, which increases the tax base.
Almost. Just stirred up something for me. I'm sorry, y'all. So, without this $500,000 transfer, TIF 2 would have $1.3 million in it. And it's possible, but it's probably not going to use $1.3 million in the next five years to incentivize business. It's possible, but I don't know. Doesn't seem likely that we're gonna use $1.3 million to incentivize, incentivize business in TIF 2. Therefore, the interested bodies, the other stakeholders, would then be expecting a payout in much the way that we did another TIF not too long ago. But that payout will not come, not in the magnitude that it would come, because you're gonna take $500,000 out of that and put it into another TIF. So even if that TIF expires, TIF 2 expires in five years, there may be $850,000 left, and we'll have to split that up between the stakeholders, but it would have been $1.3 million left in there, or something to that, of that magnitude, if we don't do this transfer. Is that correct?
I would just look at the projects.
Well, I just wanna make sure I get, I'm sorry, Libby, but I.
I think, you know, it's all coming from the same, it's a good question. It's all coming from the same pot. So look at the Central TIF plan, you know, look at the downtown plan. You know the things we've been talking about. Um, you know, some are moving faster than others, for sure. This one, the Cohen Building, they move quickly, and it was before you and was approved. We have others that are working along, and they're gonna need to be funded from the same source, and we're looking, you know, probably in the next year, um, for things like, um, a hotel redevelopment in the center of downtown, modifications to Lincoln Square to get spaces reoccupied. We hope a new building across the street. We got very close on that. We're trying to, um, bring that back to the table. That's the source of those funds. Um, more immediately, we're talking with a business owner in the downtown who wants to revitalize a currently vacant space next to Crane Alley and do public improvements associated with that as well. So, and I know there's many others. Um, I know the school district is very interested in making a move up for their administrative offices. We know that, um, they have an interest in redevelopment at Washington School. We know that the park district is interested in making improvements to Crystal Lake Park. And I know I'm mixing up some public and private projects, and a lot of these projects might have combinations of both. So I think there's a lot of things to be very excited about in downtown and to look forward to, and, and you know, you know, just look at any year we bring to you, maybe six or 10 development agreements. I mean, we're, we're actively promoting the redevelopment. If we don't have a funding source for that redevelopment, we won't be able to do those projects, and we will likely lose those projects, or they'll be reduced. So it gives us that competitive advantage that we have, and it also removes the impediments to development in a downtown when you compare it to like a greenfield. It's easy to do suburban development, but it's not so easy to redevelop an older downtown. So I think that, um, our taxing partners have been involved all the way through with the Central TIF, and they did condone its configuration. They condoned the, uh, reconfiguration of TIF 2 to benefit them. Um, they condoned the list of projects. Uh, there's a lot of community benefit to the projects, and, um, this is the first one, significant development. It's an interesting project. We didn't necessarily foresee that this would be the first one. Um, it's an amazing building, and this is going to allow this building. It's an amazing building, and this is going to allow this building to be maximally used for many, many years to come.
So, Libby, I am becoming clearer and clearer on the importance of development and the need for the city of Urbana to be a more attractive place for some development. And I understand that there may be a need for some incentivizing. But I don't agree completely that we wouldn't be able to do development without incentivizing. I do think there are some times when people just see that we have good infrastructure, good schools, a good population of educated and working people, and they will decide to move to Urbana to, to do business development. So I'm not lost on, on the work that's being done, the larger picture. My question for an understanding of process and understanding how this works was a very straightforward question of, would that money be given back to those taxing bodies? And you haven't answered that question.
Okay, so what I was heading to was if we want to do any of these projects, no, the money is not going to be refunded. There's been no representation. If we don't do any of those projects, we don't do anything, then there could be a surplus. There might be a surplus anyway. If we generate enough increment, hopefully we'd have a surplus, but we're not counting on it necessarily.
And so, for the clarity of myself and everyone listening, the $1.3 million that is currently in TIF Two, if we didn't do any other development and we didn't borrow from it in the Central TIF, then that $1.3 million, when TIF Two ends, would be spread amongst all the stakeholders. Is that correct?
Yes, if we deactivated that TIF, stopped all the programs that we do in the TIF and the public arts and all the things we do downtown, then it would just sit there. We wouldn't be, you know, implementing the items in the council goals or in the downtown plan or the TIF plan. And we would no longer be operating the economic development programs that benefit the downtown.
And so what I'm speaking to, when we do something like this, is that although the school board or the park district cannot stop us, we have the ability to implement TIF and to extend the TIF. And so as stakeholders or as partners, they're there at the table offering input, but they can't stop us from doing any of that. But the one thing they do rely on is that when it ends, they'll get what, what was coming to them when it ends, right? And so I'm just saying, it appears to me that I could see a school board member or a park district member anticipating a refund or payout out of a TIF. And if it doesn't come, that could, that could affect how they are doing business as well. And if we're going to operate TIFs, I do think it's extremely important that we think about how business typically decides whether or not they want to come to your place. The school districts are extremely important. So I think we should think about our school districts as partners when we're dealing with TIFs because that's going to be an extremely important part of incentivizing business to come without paying or giving them tax abatements and things like that. So I appreciate all the work that's being done by community development. I'm not saying I'm not going to support it. I'm just trying to make sure that I understand it and that the other folks who've been asking me questions about it understand it as well. So thank you very much.
Just on the school district, I do think that we stand apart in being partners with the school district when it comes to TIF for many, many years. And I've worked on TIF in enough other communities to see that, that, that is unique, that we've done that. I think it's something we can be proud of, that we have worked from the beginning very, very much shoulder to shoulder with our school district. And that's not always done, so I think that's a problem in other places.
Okay, we have, go ahead. Charlie? Mike first?
So, I wasn't going to speak on this, but I think Aaron raises a very interesting point. And one that's important that I don't think a lot of people understand is that money is fungible between TIFs, right?
If they're contiguous.
Okay, so if they're contiguous, and in this case, they are. So I guess my first question would be, in your estimation, do you think that the taxing partners, using your words, which is what they are, are aware?
Absolutely.
So that is part of the discussion when you are buying them in to the TIF agreement. They understand that.
Yes.
Ultimately, it may not be 1.2, it may be 800,000. Well, in this scenario, we're looking at $500,000, and so we're, so we're reducing one TIF and, and moving the balance in one TIF and moving it to another. So that money is fungible between the TIFs, but the taxing partners are aware that that may happen?
They are aware of that, and they have benefited from that in the past.
Okay. But I, I do think his question is fair because, you know, we are, we are taking from one TIF that's going to expire in five years. And that money would roll back to the taxing partners if not used somewhere else, right?
Yes, although we expired, we gave early expiration to large parts of TIF Two. So that was an accommodation for our taxing districts that we did not, for many properties, we did not go to the statutory limit as extended.
So I guess, yeah, what I wanted to just flesh out here is that these, these other taxing partners are well aware of the dynamics of the TIF relative to state law and how money can be moved from one to the other. But I think it's an important question for everybody to under, an important point for everyone to understand is that, that, that does exist, and therefore, we're not as a city doing some kind of Jake the Fake and saying, oh, we're going to pull it from here and use it there. That being said, I'm going to just use this opportunity and close it out after this. I'm not a fan of TIFs, and I'm not a fan of TIFs because if we were a dynamic community in terms of business, we would have organic growth. We would not have artificial growth that is being compelled by shifting tax dollars here and there and everywhere in terms of incentive. It's just too bad. And I mean, it's not unique to Urbana. It's across the country. And, and I, I just regret that we've, that we've gone down this road as, as local governments across the country. Again, not an indictment of Urbana. It's just, it's extremely unfortunate. Organic business growth is the best way to go.
Charlie, and then Eric?
Yeah, it's my understanding that because the, our taxing partners can't do economic development, that we are serving as their agent. And in fact, projects that we do today benefit the projects in the plan for both the park district and the school district down the road. They have interests in Crystal Lake Park and the Washington School in particular that are, that are in there that are part and parcel of the TIF plan. So I think you have to, you know, maybe other communities do it differently. I think we do it right in that we do include our major taxing partners, and we serve as their economic development agent because they can't do it for themselves. So if they invest their share of, you know, it's, it's the community share of $500,000 here in this other project. And of course, any investment is a gamble, but if it's successful, and that's what they're counting on, that's what they're expecting us to do because we have a good track record of pretty successful investments here with TIF. They don't all work, but they do decent. And they will get more of a return than if they get the cash tomorrow. So, I mean, that's the way I have, have treated TIF as a council member for these past 16 years. Thank you.
Eric?
So if anybody who really doesn't like TIFs, and maybe this is another area where Mike and Aaron agree, what you ought to do is you ought to lobby the state to abolish them, as California did. But if we have TIFs in Illinois, and if Champaign uses them, in Bloomington and Normal, and they do, and we don't, we're going to get killed.
Okay, anyone else? We have a motion by Ammons, seconded by Roberts. Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Resolution number.
Oh, I get to vote on that too, don't I? I do. I vote yes. Yeah, because it's a budget. Mayor pressing.
You're trying to flash your qualifications or something, Charlie?
Okay. Mr. Ammons?
Resolution number 2017-02-009 are a resolution approving an intergovernmental collaboration agreement, assessment of fair housing, PY 2020. On behalf of the Committee, I so move.
Motion by Ammons, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Reports of special committees. Do we have any special committees? Reports of officers? Bill Gray, Public Works Director.
Two items. First, I was reading the Sunday paper and I got really excited about something, and I don't know if you caught it, but we need to make a contact and confirm, but Urbana's Dart Container Corporation, Solo Cup, is going to start collecting foam recycling. We don't do that at our curbside. And it's a 24/7 drop-off at 1505 East Main Street, but they'll accept a variety of recyclable foam, including foam cups, foam egg cartons, foam meat trays, foam ice chests, foam packaging that's frequently used to protect fragile materials like TVs during shipping, for more information, et cetera. So, this is something that I currently throw away in the trash, but this is great news, and hopefully, it's a drop-off, of course. But we'll try to make contact here with this as news to us, and I wanted to share that news to you and the public. Second item I want to share is, hopefully you saw in the packet, that there is a EMCOR pre-construction open house that's going to occur Wednesday, February 22nd, from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. at 24 East Green Street, Unit 12 in Champaign. This is on Green Street just east of the train tracks in Champaign. And this is going to be an open house for actually three projects. It's, our project is Project One in Green between Bucie and Wright. And Champaign is a Project Two, which is West Green Street, and Project Three, which is White Street. So if you have an interest in the plans, the final plans, or questions construction-related, the consultants and the construction engineers will all be there to answer those questions. So I just wanted to let folks know about that, too. And that's all.
On the Dart recycling, is this the first plant that they have that's doing this, or have they been doing it in other parts of the country?
I can only answer what I read in the paper, and it doesn't say.
Okay, because, you know, we, we're kind of known for recycling, so that's nice.
Yeah, that's great.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Bill, could you give us the time, the date? Well, I have the date, but the time again?
Yeah, yes, please. It's Wednesday, so this Wednesday. Open house from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. And the field office is where this will be located, which is 24 East Green Street in Champaign, and it's Unit 19. So there's a, kind of a little strip center there on the north side of Green, just east of the tracks.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, I have a brief report. Go ahead, Diane, you want to do one?
I had an announcement for the council and the public. Just a reminder that Friday, March 3rd, at 5:30 p.m. is the 12th Annual Innovation Celebration sponsored by the Champaign County Economic Development Corporation. This celebrates entrepreneurs in Champaign County, and it's a wonderful event. It's going to be held at Parkland College Student Union. So that's March 3rd, 5:30 to 8:30 p.m. And it's a celebration of just innovation and, and inventiveness in Champaign County.
Okay, we have inventiveness in a group called Imbib Urbana, and we gave them $1,000 for a first Friday in December. And so we're coming up with another $4,000 for our first Fridays for the rest of this fiscal year. So they've done a great job. People are very excited about it. I've never heard bad things about it. Everybody raves about it, so that's what we're doing. Anyone else? Okay, we will move on. New business. I've got two appointments, the Public Arts Commission, Catherine Harrell, and the Tree Commission to appoint the Chair, Carol Ogsberger.
Move approval.
Second?
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Yes, Mr. Ammons?
I did not understand. So was this amount that we're giving Imbib, which I think I support, was that something that was just within your?
It's, it's already in the budget, it's of the C.D. Department. But they came and talked to me, and so we're going to, we found more money for them.
But because of the amount, they did not have to come to council, or we didn't have to?
It was already budgeted.
It was already budgeted?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, just for a general promotion, marketing. So we're giving it to them specifically. But they can come and ask for whatever they'd like to ask for when we do the budget for next year. Whoops. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.